Setting it up, sorry.
Got it.
There she is.
Live on Facebook.
All right, everyone ready to begin?
Okay.
Well, good evening, everyone. It is January 5th of 2021 and almost time to call the meeting of the Gallatin City Council to order. I'm going to begin because since we are meeting virtually, we do need approval from this council. So I'm going to be, I'm going to begin by reading the electronic meeting notice and then entertaining a motion from this council to continue on withholding this electronically. Anyone who is viewing this meeting may see on their screen the Zoom link or the phone numbers at which they may call in. So this says pursuant to Governor Lee's executive orders number 16 and subsequent orders and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19, the January 5th, 2021 Gallatin City Council meeting will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be live streamed to protect the public health, safety and welfare of the council and the citizens of Gallatin. You can join the Zoom webinar at the link that you see on the screen. You also can find that link on our social media and on our website, which is gallatant.gov, or you may call in if you wish to participate in the Zoom meeting. And those numbers that you may call are 470-381-2552 or 470-250-9358. If you call in, the webinar ID is 897-337-4468. Of course, you should be able to view this meeting live on our Facebook page and also on our website and on cable channel 19. But if you want to participate in the meeting, you need to do so through the Zoom meeting link or the dial-in numbers. With that disclosure, I would entertain a motion from this council.
Most approve.
Second. Okay, I have a motion to hold this meeting electronically by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander, and I'm going to ask that Ms. Kitchell call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. With that, the meeting is officially called to order and we're going to begin the meeting like we do each meeting with an invocation. And this evening, our city engineer, Mr. Nick Tuttle, is going to offer a prayer for us. If you would bow with me, please.
Mayor, Father, as we come to you this evening, we come with Thanksgiving. We thank you so much for your blessings on us, even in these difficult times. Now, as we turn the page from 2020 to 2021, we gladly welcome this new year and all of the challenges that it may bring. This year, we welcome a new member to the city council and we know that all authority is appointed by you, and so we pray for all those in authority, that you would bless them with your wisdom and patience as they lead in decisions for all of us. Guide us all as we embark on this journey of 2021 and as we begin together tonight as a city, the city of Gallatin. It's all these things that I do pray in your son Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. I appreciate your words. Certainly, I do hope that this new year is helping everyone feel some hope for the days and weeks and months and year ahead. We have no minutes to approve this evening, and so we're going to move ahead to our swearing-in ceremony. But before we do that, I certainly do want to say a big thank you to our Vice Mayor Steve Camp. He has served the city on this council for 10 years and I'm really sad to see him leave. And Steve, you want to say goodbye to us?
Oh, yes, I'll say something. I just want to thank the people for District 13, let me present them on this council. And I really appreciate the council members. We had a pretty good camaraderie up there most of the time, and we got some good things accomplished. And with that, I'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Camp. I think the rest of the council would join me in saying that we have enjoyed working with you. We've enjoyed your friendship, and it's always been evident that you care about the citizens of your district and the citizens of Gallatin and the betterment of Gallatin. And I feel confident that you have helped build a better future for all of us and all of those to come. So thank you for serving with such honor and grace. It's been a true pleasure.
Well done, Vice Mayor Camp. Enjoy working with you. Keep the bread coming.
Okay, we're gonna move along now. We have a special guest this evening who is going to be swearing in our newly elected council members. You might have known him at one time as the city attorney for the city of Gallatin, but now we know him as the Honorable Judge Joe H. Thompson. So Judge Thompson, thank you so much for doing this this evening. The order in which we are planning to do the swearing-in begin with the council at large, then council District 1 and council District 2. And so with that, if you're okay, I'll turn it over to you, Judge Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and I appreciate you asking me and granting me the privilege and honor of participating in this ceremony. It's been six and a half years since I was sitting where Ms. Hi McCauley is sitting. It doesn't seem that long. It seems like yesterday, but I'm really thrilled that I was asked to do that. When people ask me if I miss the city attorney work, I tell them I don't miss the meetings, but I miss all the wonderful people that I worked with and for over the years. I know how hard it is to do the jobs that you have. And I know that each of you have the best interest of the city in mind. So again, thank you for allowing me to participate. Councilman Fennell, since you're our councilman at large, I'll ask you to raise your right hand for me and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Tennessee.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Tennessee.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Gallatin.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Gallatin.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge.
That I will faithfully and impartially perform.
And discharge. The duties of the Office of Councilman.
The duties of Office of Councilman.
According to law.
According to law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate it.
Councilman Love. Councilwoman Love.
Yes, I'm ready.
If you will raise your right hand for me, repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Tennessee.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Tennessee.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Gallatin.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Gallatin.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
The duties of the Office of Councilwoman according to law.
The duties of Office of Councilwoman according to law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
George, you're new to the council, so an especial congratulations to you. I know this is an exciting night for you. If you'll raise your right hand for me. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Tennessee.
And the Constitution of the state of Tennessee.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Gallatin.
And the Charter and the ordinances of the city of Gallatin.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
The duties of the Office of Councilwoman according to law.
The duties of Councilman at law. I'm sorry.
That's all right. The duties of the Office of Councilwoman according to law.
The duties of the Office of Councilwoman according to law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Councilwoman George.
Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome, Councilwoman.
Another Councilwoman.
That's right. Congratulations to all three of you. God bless you. I wish you the best of luck and thank you for giving me this honor. And it's good to see all these people that I've known for so long.
Good to see you too, Joe.
Okay, bye-bye.
Judge Thompson, thank you so much. Thank you for continuing to serve our county and God bless you and your family.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful year and wonderful meeting tonight. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Bye-bye. And I would also extend my congratulations to Councilwoman George, Councilwoman Love and Councilman Fennell. I'm looking forward to working with you all in the years ahead and we're gonna have a good time. We're gonna get some hard work done and keep working for the city and the citizens of Gallatin. Now, it is time for the election of Vice Mayor.
Here, I'd like to nominate Mr. Sean Fennell for Vice Mayor.
Okay, I had, I had, I'm sorry, I had, I think it was Councilman Overton.
That's correct.
We'll come on here. Okay, Councilman Overton nominated, Councilman Fennell.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and a second by Councilman Fan.
Yes.
All right, I have it going on now. Okay, I have a nomination and I have a second. Are there any further nominations? Is there any discussion that anyone wishes to have? All right, with none, I'm asking Ms. Kitchell to call the roll for the vote, please.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell. Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
And Councilwoman George.
Yeah.
Mayor's unanimous vote.
All right. Well, congratulations, Vice Mayor Fennell.
Okay, I'll try my best for you guys. I appreciate that. I'll be in soon, ma'am.
I know that you will. So now we have a new Vice Mayor. I have to not call you Councilman. That will be hard for a while, so bear with me. And then the next item on our agenda for this evening, something we do every couple of years, is appoint a council representative to, or elect a council representative to the Planning Commission. So I don't know if anyone at this time has nomination, but I would.
Say something, Mayor Brown.
Please do.
It's been a privilege to serve on the Planning Commission and have the confidence of its board. And I enjoyed my time serving on the Planning Commission for the city, and I also done, I enjoyed it for the Planning Commission for the county also. I did, like, I would like to say that I started having a conflict several months back, and I sent a letter to the mayor offering my resignation for a conflicted time, and the mayor asked me if I would serve the rest of my my time, and I did, and I really do enjoy it. I do, I really need to step back from it right now with the conflict, but I've really thought about this, and I've told many of you several months prior to this, that I would like to nominate Councilwoman Love. I think she would be a great person for that position. I think she's compassionate. I think she will listen to the citizens, and I think she'd be a wonderful asset for her speaking on the Planning Commission, and I hope that I'll get a second for that.
I'll second it.
There's a motion by Councilman Fennell, a second by Councilman Alexander. Are there any other nominations for the Planning Commission? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask if anyone wishes to discuss further.
And I think you'll love it. You'll be a great asset.
She's just smiling.
I'm really surprised, to be honest.
Okay. Well, I will say that I know that, I know from experience that serving on the Planning Commission is really a lot of hard work and, and, and takes a lot of time and energy and subjecting yourself to a lot of abuse as well. So I, I've done it. Several of you have done it. I commend you for your willingness to do it, Ms. Love. And if we're ready, we'll go ahead and ask Ms. Kitchell to call the roll for the vote, please.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell. Pardon me? I can't hear you. Okay, Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
I'll abstain.
Right, and Councilman Overton.
Yes.
And Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Mayor, we have another unanimous vote.
Well, one abstention. I didn't miss.
Oh, and one abstention, I'm sorry.
Regardless, Councilwoman Love, congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'll try to do my best.
I think you do well, Ms. Love, because you love to read. It takes a lot of reading.
Well, we look forward to your service in that capacity. Well, that kind of ends our official business as far as new council members and new representatives, as far as the Vice Mayor and the representative on the Planning Commission goes. And so now we will proceed with what is a more regular meeting that we're accustomed to. And we're going to start this evening with public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting that people may speak to any item that is on the night's agenda. We ask that you introduce yourself, share your address with us, and you will have five minutes to speak. Being on the Zoom platform, it is a little bit different. We need you to raise your hand to indicate that you wish to speak. If you do that on the phone, you do that by pushing star nine. If you're on the Zoom meeting, if you'll hover around the bottom, you'll find a raise your hand function, and you can do it that way if you're online with us. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Henshaw, and he will guide us through the public recognition on agenda-related items.
Thank you, Mayor. Just again, a reminder, please use the raise your hand function if you'd like to speak, and then we'll call your name. If you are using a cell phone, I see three different cell phone numbers, like the mayor mentioned, you, you'll do star nine to use the raise your hand function. And I will look at panelists while I don't see any attendees. I don't see any panelists at this time. And I don't see anyone who looks like they'd like to speak.
Well, very good. We will then declare, well, I just saw a hand come up.
Yes, Nathan Shell. Go ahead. You'll have to unmute yourself. There you go.
Hey, everybody. How are y'all doing tonight?
Great.
Fine, thanks. Mr. Shell, I think you're calling about, I bet you're, I bet you're trying to participate about Cairo Road, and that's public comment not related to the agenda, so it would have to be at the end of the meeting. If I'm wrong, you can correct me, but I think that's probably why you're here.
That is correct. I'm here.
Okay, so.
Till the end.
Yeah, I, I should have explained that when I introduced this section of public comment, but the public comment on non-agenda-related items actually happens at the end of the meeting, and that's open to everyone who wishes to comment on anything not on the agenda.
All right, thank you so much.
My pleasure. Okay. I see no one else indicating that they wish to speak, so I am going to move along to Mayor's comments. I do have several things that I do want to mention this evening, all over the place, to be honest with you. First of all, I do want to remind this council that it is time for the filing of your statement of interest with the Tennessee Ethics Commission. I think that's due by the end of January. Just a reminder that that does need to be done. You should have gotten a letter in the mail, and I would encourage you to get that done when you receive it. Secondly, I wanted to talk a little bit about the vaccinations that are happening right now in Sumner, well, all over the state of Tennessee, all over the country. And we have been bombarded with phone calls, and I bet a bunch of you have gotten a lot of calls too. Certainly, everyone, not everyone, but a lot of people are very eager to get the vaccination, and our Sumner County Health Department is doing a great job of dispensing all of the doses that they receive. Unfortunately, right now, they're just rolling out the vaccinations. They are learning as they, not learning as they go, how to give the inoculations, but learning as they go how to organize them. And most importantly, and, and having the most effect on everybody, is the uncertain supply stream at this time. So there is an online signup. It is showing full, but I think as the supply increases, you're going to see more slots open up. Right now, they're doing it by phases based on what work sector you are in, but there's also an age sector, an age sector that's running concurrently with those various phase sectors. So right now, 75 and over are eligible to receive vaccinations. However, the number of doses that were expected are not here yet. So while there have been some signups and they are all looking full, I just keep telling people who call us to keep an eye on the signup sheets. As more vaccinations become available, more spots will become available. And I think our, our state is actually ahead of the rest of the country, and I do believe that our country is committed to getting those vaccines out. It's my understanding, this is just from the news, that, that it's not, it's not the doses that aren't being manufactured. It's the doses, the distribution of the doses that is presenting a challenge. So that is kind of where we are with some things at this time. So I really do want to commend our Sumner County Health Department. They've worked so hard, not just over the last several weeks with vaccinations, but certainly over the whole year with testing, trying to help people in our community, and now with vaccinations. I know that they were working over the holidays trying to, to help people and get those vaccinations given. And nothing is perfect yet, but they are working hard to do as, as well as they possibly can with the resources and the information that they have. So I think things are going to continue to ramp up, and we'll see those vaccinations distributed more quickly as the days go by. So we're in the very beginning now, but there are some drugs out there. They are vaccinating with them, and in time, everybody that wants one should be able to get one, and we hope sooner rather than later. Also, want to mention, certainly our city employees are continuing to work through lots of challenges. We have had, you know, continue to have COVID cases within our workforce. Thankfully, everyone to date is or has recovered. I'm most grateful that no one in our workforce has, has lost their life and no one in their family has lost their life due to COVID, or no, I shouldn't say that. We have had some members of families that have. But, but our workforce had a lot of people who have been sick with the virus, and they continue to come to work. They continue to serve the citizens of Gallatin. I commend them for that. Beyond that, a lot of our folks, of course, worked over the holidays, at least and far always do. This year, our Public Works Department also did, because they wanted to stay on top of trash. And I want to mention that I actually dropped by recycling twice over the holidays, and the recycling center was cleaned up. There were guys out there working, and it was the weekend or it was the holiday. And so, Mr. Wilkinson, I hope that you will pass that on to your folks, because I know they didn't want to be there working. And, and I think you asked for volunteers, and they volunteered to do that. So we appreciate that, because that's been a challenge every year, and it was not this year. Everyone was able to drop off their recyclables as they wanted to, and there was space available. Finally, I want to mention, most of you know this, but I certainly think it bears to mention here. We did have a very special Ms. Claus show up here in Gallatin right before Christmas, and then again, right before New Year's, and all she donated almost $18,000 to pay off the utility bills at, of customers at both Gallatin Public Utilities and Gallatin Department of Electricity. I actually had someone just reach out to me not very long ago, saying that they would like to help do something similar. So it certainly made my Christmas that somebody in our community could and would be so generous to people they didn't even know. And appreciate her efforts to encourage others to do what they might do to help their friends or, or neighbors or complete strangers, but people in our community. And I trust that those people who received that generous gift will be able to use that money for something else that they need to. And I hope it made their Christmases and their holiday merrier, and I just wanted you all to know about that. And there's been so much going on since the last meeting. I'm sure there are other things that I should have mentioned and failed to. But, you know, it's a new year. We have a lot ahead of us. We have a lot behind us, and, and I do hope that the new year is bringing hope to you, your families, to our citizens, to our community, because I do think we have a lot to be hopeful for, and we have some things to look forward to. And I know we're all going to continue to work together for our city. And, and just as I mentioned with Mr. Camp, I certainly appreciate all of you, our department heads and our city council members. We have a, a great, committed, devoted, hardworking, really loving group of people, and we're fortunate, or I feel fortunate to work with all of you, and I'm looking forward to this year. And with that, I'm going to conclude my mayor's comments. All right, moving now to the regular agenda, we're going to begin with item one, which is public hearing on resolution R201-3. And Councilman Overton, this is for you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is resolution adopted and recommended to the Sumner County Coordinating Committee to amendment to the city of Gallatin urban boundary of the growth plan of Sumner County ratified by the city of Gallatin pursuant to public charter 1101 acts of 1988, and I so move.
Second.
Have a, well, it's, it's a public hearing, so we're just, that's okay. So we're just opening the public hearing. The public hearing happens much like public recognition did. You would like to speak on this resolution, you may do so. You will, if you're on your cell phone calling in, you raise your hand by hitting star nine. If you're on the Zoom call, you do it by using the raise your hand function on the screen, and Mr. Henshaw will call on you if you indicate that you wish to speak.
Very good. We do have someone who's raised their hand. Michelle in Pascal, go ahead.
Thank you. This is Michelle Juvent, 1335 Long Hallow Pike. Regarding expanding this urban growth boundary, I was wondering if the people who live in the county that are going to be added into the urban growth boundary, if they've been notified with letters, because I know that one of my friends who is affected by this, is opposed to it, and she didn't know about it until I told her about it. So I think that, that was kind of weird. That, that was what I wanted to say. I think that when, anytime that the city's doing something that's affecting someone and their property, that they should be notified, because not everybody gets the newspaper. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to speak, please use the raise your hand function.
Yeah, I see no one else indicating that they wish to speak, correct, Mr. Henshaw?
That's correct.
All right, so we will declare a public hearing on resolution R2101-3 closed. We'll move on to item two, which is first reading on ordinance O2012-53. And for that, Council Vice Mayor Fennell is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance in city Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, amending Article 12, supplementary district regulations, section 12.01, regulations applicable for all district regulations, section 1201020, fences, walls and hedges of the Gallatin zoning ordinance, repealing conflicting ordinances and providing for severability and providing for an effective day. With that, I motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Fennell, a second by Councilman Overton, opening the floor for any discussion. Now, see, no one indicating that they wish to discuss, so I'm going to ask that Ms. Kitchell call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
He did, Councilman.
Is he here?
Yeah, Councilman Alexander's here, but he's muted.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
And Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Mayor, we have a seven-zero vote.
Thank you. First reading on ordinance O2012-53 is passed unanimously. Item number three is first reading on ordinance O2012-55, and Councilwoman Love. and Councilwoman Love is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating fifty-two thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars for the use and benefit of the City of Galton in support of the Town Creek Tributary Watershed Study. And I so move.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Love, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? And this is first reading on ordinance oh two zero one two dash fifty-five. Ms. Kitchell, if you would call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Mayor, seven I zero nays.
Thank you. First reading on ordinance oh two zero one two dash fifty-five. It's approved unanimously. Item four is resolution R two one oh one dash four. Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of the City of Galton, Tennessee, supporting a notice of intent to file application applying for an urban transportation planning grant for the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the development of communities in county-wide pedestrian bicycle master plan. I so move.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Alexander, a second by Councilman Fan. Is there any discussion on this?
We're having a couple of people call and ask me what this is for. Could, could Mr. McCord just quickly, quickly tell people what this is?
And I have a clarification before that. Was this, I know this resolution was not on the agenda, but was this discussed at our last meeting?
It was brought up under other business at the last meeting and he explained kind of how we were planning to do this with the rest of the county. So Mr. McCord, you're here, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I see.
Counsel, this is a request to apply for a grant in concert with other local governments in the county to, and it's a twenty eighty grant. So we won't be providing but a small portion of that twenty percent. And the other jurisdictions will provide the other part of that. So it's up to a two hundred thousand dollar grant. Excuse me, I think it's a ten, ten ninety percent grant. So the county share or all the communities in the county share would be twenty thousand dollars maximum. And then our share would be in the neighborhood of about six thousand dollars or so. But it would be a grant that we would apply for and obtain through FD, T dot to fund the preparation of a master plan for bicycling pedestrian improvements countywide, including all of the cities. So this is something we had proposed to the MPO about a year and a half ago as, as part of their urban work program, unified urban work program. And they just said that it was too concentrated or too localized. So they decided they would not fund it. So here's an opportunity for us to have that, not only benefiting the city, but the county and the other cities so that we can have a unified network, at least within the county, and do it fairly economically as well. Much, much more economically than if we tried to do it just by ourselves, so.
Thank you for that explanation, Mr. McCord.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. McCord. Did you say it was eighty, twenty or ninety, ten?
I believe it's ninety, ten, so two hundred thousand dollars. So it'd be a twenty percent, twenty thousand dollar local match.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you explaining and clarifying and that being about bicycling pedestrian because the, the name is likely to strike fear in some people when you say urban transportation planning.
I just want to come and ask you.
Yeah, but it, but it's really far more, far more pure and community oriented than the grant might, than the grant name might suggest. So with that, is there any further discussion? All right, we're going to have a vote on resolution R two one zero one dash four. And Ms. Kitchell, would call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Mayor, seven I zero nays.
And resolution R two one zero one dash four is passed unanimously. So that concludes our regular agenda and brings us now to any other business that this council may wish to bring before this body.
I've got three or four things I'd like to bring up, Mayor.
Okay.
First of all, let me thank Steve Fan for his hard work on the city council. I appreciate him and really enjoy working with him and still looking forward to coming out to his house and getting that homemade bread. So that won't change. Also, number two, I like to welcome Ms. George to the city council. And I just hope there's anything that any of us council members that can do to assist you, please don't hesitate to ask us. Again, welcome aboard. Thank you so much. And let me thank all of the community and family and friends for the Christmas boxes. Last year, my wife and I was able to give out twenty-three boxes. But this year, well, that's last year too. But this time, we was able to give out fifty-six boxes due to the generosity of so many people donating. And so again, thank you so much and hats off to everyone. And also, I think that's all, that's four. Oh, Zach, Zach, thank you for the work that you're doing over in fifth district. Appreciate you, man. And also Nick Tuttle. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
I appreciate that, Councilman Alexander. And you're apparently special because I didn't know anything about Mr. Camp and any bread, so.
Okay, that's a secret we, we will keep.
I'm about to kick it, ain't it, Mayor, but.
But, but certainly we recognize you two, Councilman Alexander, for your distribution of food boxes on Christmas Eve. That's really cool that you all do that. It also reminds me to say a big shout out to our Sumner County Food Bank, along with the reminder that this has been a hard year for so many people and they need donations more than ever because they have more demand than ever and less revenue coming in. So think of them. Also, when I mentioned West Eastland Church of Christ because back before Christmas, they were able to partner with someone and give out fourteen hundred boxes of food. So we got some really awesome people in our community and we're very, very blessed by that. And, you know, we need to make sure that we highlight those to each other. It's like I warned you, I am forgetting things already. But certainly, those are other efforts that really made a difference in the lives of others in our community. So thank all of you all for that. Any other, other business?
I would like something.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you to everyone who has been just overwhelmingly welcoming to me. And I so appreciate it. And I've been able to visit quite a few of the, the different department heads and everyone has just been so open. It's like an open door policy. I felt like I've been here forever, which I've been here for a long time, but never really inside the Galton way of doing business. And it's just amazing. And I would like to tell you, John, thank you for the welcoming, but I do not bake bread. So you'll have to go to ten B.
Man do not leave a bread alone anyway, so chicken or pork.
Fried chickens, all they want.
Jimmy, did you remind her she's got to sing the national anthem?
Yeah, Ms. George, you got to sing the national anthem next week. I just forgot to tell you that.
Oh, yeah, well, you forget that one, too.
Councilwoman George, we're excited that you're joining us. I think you're going to be a great asset for our city. And appreciate anyone willing to run for office. And now you're going to be serving, so we're excited to have you with us.
I'm so excited. I really am. And I do appreciate everybody.
Now, you're going to find that we have some amazing department heads for certain.
Yeah, I already see that.
Anybody else have anything to say?
I do.
Wait, well, let's let Vice Mayor Fennell go and then we'll come to you, Mr. Gregory.
Okay, thanks.
I would just like to say that I look forward to the day that we get this corona behind us. I do enjoy the Zoom meetings. It's awful easy, but I still miss all of us together. And so I do look forward to those days to come.
I think we're all looking forward to seeing people.
Yes.
In person and not on a screen. It's a little two dimensional. Okay, Mr. Gregory?
Thank you. To Councilman Hayes, Mayor, council members, and department heads, I want to publicly apologize for my inappropriate comments towards Councilman Hayes at the last special call meeting of the council. It was very disrespectful and totally unprofessional and something I sincerely regret. I love all of y'all and I hope I'm remembered by for loving you. It's just something that happened that I did not mean to happen and I'm so sorry. Thanks.
Thank you, David. I, I think it's fair for me to speak on behalf of this council and say we love you too and you will be remembered for the amazing work that you have done for the city.
Thank you.
People just can't imagine the problems that we have. We call Mr. Gregory and they get solved. And David, I know we'll have another opportunity, but I appreciate everything you've done for this city. It's forty years is a long, long time and maybe even write a book.
No, no, no.
Like even write a book, David, tell some of those stories. But I sincerely appreciate everything you've done. And our water and our guest department is in such good shape and it's because of your leadership and I really do appreciate you.
And y'all, I want to say y'all are one of the best councils I've ever worked with. Sincerely, you know, I'm just getting old. I've got the old timers, but, but I love, I've loved the job. I've loved the opportunities. I've loved everything that we've accomplished with y'all and with all the councils and mayors. And I, I just, you know, I've been so blessed. And though, Hayes, I love you, man. Thanks.
Mr. Gregory, I too want to echo what Ms. Overton said. We appreciate all the hard work that you've done and I hope your retirement will be great. And I hope, if you don't know, I hope you learn how to make bread and give me a call.
That'll be the day. Maybe I will.
That'll be the day.
Okay, congratulations, man.
Thank you for all you've done, David.
Thank you.
I'd like to say that I have an appreciation for the job you've done after being on the council now two years. I didn't realize how much responsibility you've had. And looks to me like you've done a super job.
Thank you very much.
For the most part, I hate that you had to put up a brown that long, but you've been putting up with them a long time.
Years you, you have made an impact on a, a little certainty issue.
Thanks so much.
All right. All right, well, thank you all. I think it's time now to move to public recognition on non-agenda related items. By now, if you've been on this meeting, you likely know the drill. You raise your hand to indicate that you wish to speak. If you're on a cell phone, you do that by pushing star nine. If you're on the Zoom meeting, you do that by hovering over the raise your hand function. We ask that you introduce yourself, give us your address and you will have five minutes to speak. With that, Mr. Henshaw?
Thank you, ma'am. Nathan Shell? Go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. Hey, wanted to get with you guys over Airport Road in Cairo. Over the last week, I've kind of made it very interesting throughout the community about we really need to get a traffic light there. You know, I've spoke with Nick Tuttle over in engineering and great guy. He said that he's going to help to try to get a survey done of that area to see if it meets the certain requirements that's being asked. You know, but he also had mentioned to me in this meeting that our council can actually overrule him and it can be voted upon for a traffic light to be put there. Now, I've been speaking with Mayor Paige Brown over it and she said, you know, it's better to follow, you know, the chain and go through the proper channels on getting one installed. And me, I completely understand it more than anyone would. But we need to do something to protect our neighbors, our friends, our family members in this community because Airport Road in Cairo, it is a horrible intersection during peak hours and somebody's really going to get hurt. And we have to step up. We need to do something, whether it's taking and we putting a patrol person out there during peak hours to help with traffic flow. People shouldn't have to try to dart across an intersection to try to get across and barely get missed every single morning. You know, I've went out over the last few days and I've talked to over five hundred neighbors, friends. I've dropped off flyers at every single one of their doors, spoke to them and I said, hey, you know, what's your feelings on this? And they said it's well past due. It's well past due. And, you know, I've lived out here, I live at seven six zero Carolyn Lane, but I, I've lived out here for seven years now. I've lived in Sumner County for fourteen years. I, I love Sumner County and the last thing I want is for one of our residents to get injured, one of our neighbors, one of our friends, one of our family members. Here it is. I've got a seventeen-year-old daughter. She's ready to get her license. I'm too afraid to get her to license because I'm afraid of her pulling out onto that street and getting hit. We end up having to go out Hartsville Pike, which still isn't the best way out, but it's a safer intersection than what Airport Road even is during certain hours. You know, I'm asking you guys and I'm asking everyone. I mean, I contacted Donald Bandy, Chief of Police. Thank you. By the way, I see that you're on the call, but I appreciate your willingness to help get this email sent out to everybody, you know. But I'm asking everyone to try to figure out a solution, whether it's getting a four-way stop sign put in for temporary. It's getting somebody out there during peak hours to help patrol. It's getting something in place where nobody else gets hurt. Honest to God, this is a scary, scary intersection. And I, I understand that, you know, Nick Tuttle and his word said, T dot handed you all a mess. And I understand T dot handed you a mess, but I also understood that from other council that T dot's handing you all more messes every time they do a job and that you all don't want to upset T dot. You know, you all only go off of their recommendations, but every time T dot does a job, if they keep on making a mess of things, then don't something need to be said instead of keep on handing our own city a mess? So my question is, you guys, what can you guys do for us? I mean, that's a big question. What can you do to ensure that when I pull out of here tomorrow, that I'm not going to get hit? What can you do to ensure that my neighbor, that seventy-something years old, she isn't going to get hit? You know, we shouldn't have to fear trying to pull out of an intersection that we're going to get injured. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Shell.
Okay, moving on to Michelle and Pascal.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. Michelle Juvants, I'm also gonna talk to you about an intersection. I guess it's been about two years, almost two years now that we've been talking to you about the intersection at Harris Lane and Long Hollow Pike, the one that has the pork chop. We've talked about it a lot. And I wanted to give you an update on that because that's my neighborhood. Last month, the guard rail was knocked down again. I think that's five times now that that guard rail's been taken out. It was a box truck making the legal right turn. They were not making illegal turn, but they got their back wheels stuck on the guard rail and took it out. So it's just too narrow right there with that pork chop even for vehicles to be making a legal turn. The illegal left turns that the pork chop is supposed to be preventing are still happening. I mean, we see people turning left there onto Long Hollow Pike all the time. So the pork chop is actually not serving its purpose. Also, last month, the dividers, they have those little orange plastic dividers that are, that also got flattened and replaced again. The city was replacing that. So I know that we've been talking about this over and over and over and over again and that you've done a study and that you've decided not to do anything about it. But it's still, I mean, it's crazy that that guard rail's been taken out so many times and it's costing, maybe it's T dot's money, but it's still our taxpayer dollars that's paying for that. So it, my, my recommendation, my solution, take out that pork chop. People are going to turn left there anyway, even though it's there. It will solve the problem of making that road too narrow for cars to actually make their legal turns and they will stop running over the divider because it will solve the problem that road being too narrow. I mean, it will still be too narrow, but that pork chop really like. I mean, it will still be too narrow, but that pork chop really like squeezes out a ton of space in the middle. And that was it. It's going to continue happening and I can't ignore it. I mean, that's my neighborhood. So I'll keep updating you every time that happens, but I hope that, you know, you'll, you'll do a solution that will solve the problem. Happy New Year, everybody. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Jevant.
Okay, Ms. Sarah Valley Rose, go ahead.
Mayor Brown, Councilmen and Women, thank you so much for hearing us tonight. I also want to second with Nathan, Mr. Nathaniel Schell has talked about, about the need for a traffic light at Cairo Road and Airport Road.
Would you share your address, please? I'm sorry I interrupted.
It's 1122 Lewis Jones Boulevard. And I've been living at this address about a year and a half and a resident of Gallatin for 14 years. And in the year and a half that I have lived here, I have seen the need for a light at that intersection, not only during peak hours, but I also want to tell about how my concern is during inclement weather. We are kind of a lower lying area and over by the airport, when there's fog, which has happened many, many times early morning, it is so thick there. Excuse me, my little one's talking to me right now. Silas momma's going to say something. Okay, I'll be right with you. That's my little four year old. He wanted to make his debut apparently tonight. So one morning on the way to church, one early morning, it was so thick with fog that it was very scary for me traveling, crossing Airport Road. Cairo Road. And well, I don't know. I don't know how to fix that. No children talking. Can you all still hear me?
We may have lost you.
Are you still hearing?
Let me, is it doing the same thing when I speak?
I do hear background noise when you're speaking. Do I need to turn my volume up or down?
Why don't you try turning your volume down?
Okay, my volume is almost completely down. Can y'all still hear me?
I'm sorry. It looks like Councilman Fan's microphone. It keeps highlighting his image.
Councilman Fan, can you try muting yourself and see if that will help? Okay, my apologies, Ms. Rose. Why don't you try again? I think we're better now.
Okay, great. No worries. Okay, so just to go back to what I was saying, one morning, traveling to church, crossing over Airport Road from Cairo Road, the fog was so thick there that literally I felt like I was taking my life, you know, in my hands and gambling, crossing that intersection. I do think during not only peak traveling hours for working hours, but also because of weather related conditions, there is a great need for a light in that intersection. It has happened numerous times, even yesterday, traveling out of our neighborhood during peak hours. It was very difficult to even get an opening to take a left onto Airport Road. And I know many people feel the need to have to, to gun it, to get properly onto the street. And it is very terrifying, no matter the age, whether you are a 17 year old or a 90 something year old driving. I do see the need for a light there. So I just wanted to reiterate that as well tonight and thank you all for listening. And it has been so refreshing for, to hear all of you and your heartfelt thanks and gratitude towards one another. Councilman Alexander, I have some cornbread currently in the oven, so you're welcome to come on over here.
Lord do ask some prayers.
Thank you all for hearing us tonight.
I think we made friends, so thank you so much.
Okay, Todd Allen.
Hello, this is actually Kristy Allen. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm actually dodging a basketball game here at Gallatin High School, so I wasn't sure if I could find a quiet spot. And my name is Kristy Allen and I live at 104 Vintus Court. And I just wanted to also comment on my neighbors, Mr. Schell and Ms. Rose regarding the intersection at Cairo Road and Airport Road. Again, you know, obviously it's, it's a dangerous situation and we've got a, we have a combination of a couple of things going on here. I mean, number one, you know, just the design of the intersection itself is not ideal. But then the increase in traffic and, you know, with all of the growth that's been happening in Gallatin and in this area, and we're seeing more traffic come through. And so, you know, we're kind of experiencing growing things that go along with that. The design of that intersection, if you are traveling on Airport Road, driving past the airport headed toward, say, Highway 25, and you need to turn right onto Cairo Road, it is so narrow right there. I mean, I drive a small car and really just have to squeeze through and hope that I make it. But, you know, my husband, my son, if they're driving, you know, just our truck and pulling a trailer, it's extremely tight right there. I mean, there's just not enough room to pull into that intersection. So when you're sitting there, you know, on Cairo, trying to pull out onto Airport Road, you've got that coming at you on the left. You have people coming at you from the right, turning into Cairo Road. And then coming straight across, you know, if you're trying to go straight across Cairo Road, anyone turning left. I mean, there had been many, many times that we've been sitting there, waiting to turn left to get onto Airport Road. And you just say, forget it. I'm going to go straight. I'll go around. And I too have a high school student who just started driving this past year. And, you know, our plan with her every morning is, you know, we told her back in the beginning, if you can go straight, that's great. If it's too crowded, if it's unsafe, if it's dangerous, just take a right, go out, you know, out to the red light and go down 25 that way. I mean, we've had to, we've had to work around, you know, that intersection numerous times. And it's certainly an issue during the peak hours. And of course, in the morning, you know, that's from seven until about, you know, eight, eight thirty in the morning. But in the afternoon, that peak time, it starts at three o'clock and it doesn't end until six. And so if we're, we don't have any other way to go as we're heading out from, from our neighborhood. But if we're coming in, we just avoid it. We just don't even come that way anymore. We just continue down, you know, Highway 25 and cut through one of the neighborhoods to get home because it's just too dangerous. And I think it's been about three weeks ago on a Saturday, there was a pretty bad wreck there that involved four vehicles. And I don't know this for myself, but in the Rock Church, you know, through some of the neighbors, that someone had to be cut out of one of those cars. So, you know, we've, we've lived in our neighborhoods for, since 1998. We've been there a very long time. You know, and they've moved Cairo Road twice now. And each time it gets moved, visibility gets less and less. So it's at the point now that it's extremely dangerous. And while I'm on here, I did want to bring up, you know, one, one other thing unrelated to that, that intersection, but with the Facebook construction, I know several months ago, and it was approved that they could, you know, do the rock crushing at night. There has been at least three different times that the house has shaken, 11:30, 12 o'clock, 12:30 at night. And we have a neighborhood, you know, Facebook group. And we're all, did you, did you hear that? Did you feel that? Yeah, it shook my house. What was it? I don't know. And so I'm not sure if you all have had any, any complaints in that regard. Just noise and vibrations and all of that that are happening at night related to that construction. So that's all I have. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and finally, Kristen.
Hi, I just wanted to piggyback off of the same intersection. And I guess a lot of the
Excuse me, would you share your name and address, please?
Oh, sure. Kristen Van Winen and I'm at 791 Carolyn Lane. And we've lived here for about four years now. So we were, you know, living here while they were doing the construction on Airport Road. So I mean, I'm in agreeance with a lot of the things that my neighbors have said. I also wanted to add to the fact that as development continues to go forward, there's also that Publix being built down there at 109 and the Airport Road where it, you know, splits off. So as planning goes forward with more neighborhoods down the road and I just think that traffic's going to continue to increase in that area, which is a big concern. Also wanted to point out that like as you're coming from Cairo to either turn left or right onto Airport Road, I mean, Cairo is really in a depression there. So it's, it's really hard to see, to have a clear vision of who's coming, what's coming, how fast they're going. So you really don't have a lot of time to judge that. So that makes it even difficult to just, you know, have a good judgment of how fast people are traveling when you're trying to turn there. Cause the speed limit is 40 there, but certainly people do not travel 40 on that road. So I think those are just the two extra things that I wanted to add to that, just with as development grows, you know, adding the Publix and that becoming more of a, a main route for people to get to things. I think it's just going to continue to get worse. And I think that's just what we're concerned about just from what we've seen and what we're worried about going forward. So thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, Ms. Van Winen. I will just mention to the people who are, I think that's it, people that are calling about Cairo Road and Airport Road. And this is an issue that we've been aware of. It's something that we have had on our radar. We have had it evaluated. It's been a while. And so we, I know that this week, the police department has pooled accident data. And I know that Nick and I both have had conversations with T-Dot. I mean, frankly, does not want to have to pay to remedy an issue that they essentially created. So we're working with them. I think we are going to wind up having to hire the consultant that will do the evaluation on whether or not a signal will work there. I mean, just because, you know, a signal seems to the residents that would make crossing the street, crossing the road easier. You also have to meet certain criteria to make sure that it is safe to put one there because if it's not, then that creates other issues with, with sight distances and that sort of thing. So it's not just as cut and dry as we want a traffic light, let's put it in. So we're trying to evaluate all that stuff. But we are working on it. It will take time. It's not going to happen next week. We appreciate the, we appreciate so many people being concerned about it and bringing it to our attention. And our folks are working on it as well. So thank you and we appreciate it.
Yes, on that issue, could I just mention, I grew up at the end of Cairo Road and Kristen and Ms. Rose, Ms. Rose, it's Cairo instead of Cairo. In fact, my son still lives at the end of Cairo Road. And I have spent a lot of time lately going back and forth, more so than usual. And before I even heard about anybody else contacting the city, I had contacted Nick to see if there was anything that can be done there because I was almost hit myself several times. My grandfather did live in the house that was torn down right there at that intersection before it was changed. I remember when the airport was built. I remember when Airport Road originally was built through there. There was a four way stop for quite a while, but I think that the traffic grew so much that they took that out. But I totally agree with these people that are calling. I'm, and I haven't been going during the peak hours. I've been going at times when it, there shouldn't have been so much danger. And I feel very nervous crossing that note, that road. Like they said, there's, it's kind of in a dip. You can't see. So I just want to make sure that something is looked into, whether it's a light, I don't know. Maybe Nick can come up with some other solutions, too.
Yeah, I think it may be where we have to cut out the whole straight across movement, but those are some things that we're looking at, so.
Can I say something, Mayor? Can I say something?
Absolutely.
Ms. Love and I had a conversation and so I went Monday morning at 6:30 and sat on that intersection right there. And I see that it's a very busy intersection, but talking to Chief Bandy today, I didn't give it a, a really good evaluation because I didn't factor in that there will be more traffic once the kids start going to school. Well, I, I guess you could add some more traffic than what I see, you know, from 6:30 to almost 8 o'clock. I wouldn't like to say this too, I traveled 60 days every single day on Harris Lane back when I was running for office. And I do believe that what Ms. Jevant said, I feel that that island needs to come out right there because it's hard to navigate that turn right there. Of course, I was driving a dippy every day. It's all you can do to keep hitting that guardrail. I feel with the count that the band he got some right there that eventually it would be good just to pull that island out. Take it a lot easier. People can use that road. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Fennell. Anyone else? All right, Ms. Henshaw, there's someone else showing that they wish to speak, right? Everyone's already spoken that indicated they wanted to.
Correct. They've spoken already.
Okay, very good.
Can I, can you hear me?
I'm sorry?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Kristen.
I just want, I guess I just want to add one more thing on to, as the traffic increases too, that, I mean, yeah, even right now, like as, as students aren't, aren't in school and as, I mean, there's still a lot of people that are, you know, are working from home even. So as that, as this COVID thing hopefully decreases soon, I mean, the traffic's going to get even more. So that's definitely something to keep in mind, too.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that will conclude our public recognition on non-agenda related items. And with that, we need one more motion to see.
Adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilman Overton, second by Vice Mayor Fennell, all in favor, we can adjourn because that's on the agenda. Everybody have a lovely evening. It's good to see you back. Happy New Year to everyone. And I'm looking forward to a brighter new year and are confident that we will have it. Well, I'm hopeful that we will have it and confident that we will all work hard towards one. So be safe, be well, and we'll see you next week.
Bye, y'all.
Bye.